The dog sounds very, very big via the Zoom.
Oh, the dog. Yeah, he is a big dog. Hey Gina, hey Tony.
Hey Michelle.
Hi Michelle.
It might get a little wonky here for a second. I'm gonna shut off my computer audio.
There's two of you.
Yes. All right, did that work?
Mm-hmm.
No. I'm echoing, do you hear that or is that just me?
No.
It was at first, but now it's not.
Whichever one you're not using for the audio, turn the mic off.
I just figured it out. I use WebEx at work, so like this one is, I'm not really familiar with, so I got it finally.
Are you okay with how I altered that document that I sent to you, Michelle? Without, you know, without cycling back and forth?
The minutes.
Yeah, the minutes.
Oh, yes. Yeah, you know, I had Chris send me the Word document today. Because I was just working off the old.
I knew exactly what you were doing. You worked off a document that didn't have the numbering the same as the meeting last time. So it was really easy to change. I just didn't think it was worth bothering you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I don't know if it's okay to ask questions now. It's not really just like, just for my own information. What was I gonna ask? So the reopening plan, are we revisiting that today just to say how it went, like just to evaluate it?
Informally, we actually need to vote on it.
To vote on the evaluation?
No, we need to vote on implementing it. We kind of implemented it before, so we, yeah.
So we're not implementing it moving forward? It was needing to be voted upon for use this past year?
There's, I sent you a motion at about 5 o'clock for 4A.
Okay.
So it's, what I recommend we do this evening is amend the comprehensive reopening plan to allow staff and students to remove their masks consistent with the guidelines of all the organizations outdoors. And then to authorize me with prior approval to the school committee and consultation with public health nurses to alter the plan in the future consistent with DPH, CDC, and DESE so that we don't have to revisit this all the time.
I see.
Michelle, from the schools, like actually had an emergency meeting to discuss changing the reopening like guidelines after the new state guidelines went out. We just did it, we just did it kind of informally, so we're making it formal tonight. And then, like Tony said, hopefully, you know, moving forward can have a little bit more leniency. So we don't have to like meet every single time to change something.
Just so the members of the school committee understand, we weren't, you know, kind of throwing curveballs at the community. The reason they had to do that is because they actually passed a policy. A school committee policy. We never did that in August. We just had the plan. So they actually had to rescind the policy.
Yeah.
The way we did it, I mean, nobody's gonna complain because it was so obviously aligned with all of the guidelines, etc.
Right. Okay. I just, you know, I feel like I'm just still navigating all the information that's coming in and kind of trying to figure out where, you know, where it's at.
We're not alone, Michelle.
Oh, thanks Patty.
Innovation coming in.
Yeah. Especially like where I'm taking the minutes, I just, you know, want to make sure.
That's why, you know, when there's a motion that's long like that one, I'll always put it in writing for you so you can just cut and paste.
Okay. Yeah. I'm doing that right now.
Lauren, did you get the information you needed from Chris today?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Hi.
Hi Lauren.
Hi guys. Yes, I think we should be in good shape. I've got it all.
All right.
I know it's a book. I printed everything out. I'm like, whoa.
I know. I was printing at work and all my coworkers were looking at me like, what is going on?
Yeah. When the packet's that big and I have an update, I'm not gonna reprint the whole thing like I do when it's a small packet.
Yeah.
I checked, you know, there were two pages that you needed that were different and I was, I was not gonna print 30 sheets of paper for that.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
Unless you, unless you tell me to. If you tell me to, I will.
Lauren, can I ask you a quick technical question? So I've been, you know, I log on under the, what Chris sends me so I can start the meeting. Under, you know, the school committee. But it seems that there's no waiting room enabled. Is that something that you had to do when you logged on or is it something that Chris does?
No, every time I would log in, I had to enable the waiting room.
How do you do that?
Are you the host? Can you say that you're the host?
Yep, I'm the host.
Okay. All right.
That's how I logged on so that it would be the recorded meeting for the school committee.
Yep. At the bottom of the list of attendees for me, there was a little menu button.
Oh, enable waiting room?
Yep.
That's it.
All right. Thanks. I know that for moving forward.
And then, you already know this, I think Gina, but before the open comment section, I would try to say it out loud, but sometimes I'd also try to type it in to everyone in the chat function about the ground rules. And I'm happy to type it in for you if you want to, because I know it's busy when you're, when you're running through the meetings. So just let me know if that would be helpful. But just about stating your name and address and indicate whether you want to speak or have your comments read.
How do you disable the chat function? If you remember how we did that, not that I want to do that, but.
Sometimes, sometimes you do though, because it, when, I think when, well, it depends, it's however you want to do it as chair. But for me, what I caught on to over time was that it would probably be best to disable it when the open part of that.
Was over. Yeah.
People would continue to type into it.
Yeah, you're right, exactly.
It's dysfunctional because you, you couldn't really control it. So at the, if, on the, on the right-hand side of your screen, if you have attendees at the top and the chat at the bottom, the dot, dot, dot at the bottom right of the chat. And do you see that you can disable, you can make it so people can't chat or that you can do it individually? Do you see all the options there?
So I see when I click it, it's participant can chat with no one. So if I click on no one, does that make it?
And if it's to everyone, then that closes it. So like if, if you're not choosing one particular participant, you're making it, and you're saying communicate with no one, then everyone can communicate with no one.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so. So that's what I was doing and it seemed to work well. And it took me a while to catch on to doing that. And then I think it, it worked better when I did.
At the end, at the, you would disable it at the end of the open session. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. All right. So I think we're all here. We can call the meeting to order at 7:04. And if everyone could please rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
So is there any discussion about the minutes from the May 11th regular school committee meeting?
Only that I will need to abstain from the vote because I was absent for that meeting.
Seeing no discussion, do I have a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from May 11th, 2021?
Motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from May 11th, 2021, as noted by Ms. Lee.
Can I have a second?
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor, by show of hands. Ms. Karas, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Dan, myself, and Ms. Sherlock of State.
401, Madam Chair.
All right, we'll move on to the examination and authorization for the payment of bills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This afternoon, early afternoon, I forwarded a, an updated invoice list for your consideration. The total is $23,910.75, which would have to be in the motion. It is a very typical order of educational materials, a bus bill, an electric bill, and some special education costs. There's really nothing, and we have some maintenance materials. There's really nothing to bring to your attention unless the member of the school committee has a question about one of the items. Madam Chair, I think this would be a good time, since all five members of the school committee are present, to remind the school committee that in person, the actual invoices are present. You can see how thick the list is. And then there's a cover sheet with each, and then a member of the school committee signs each document after reviewing it. In the circumstances we find ourselves in, I do that. And then I sign this document, which is the summary document, which in person, three members of the school committee would sign. So I just wanted, I just wanted everyone to know that since I think only one of you was here when we were actually doing it.
Right. What we used to do is we used to, as a committee, try to arrive to the meeting early. And we each take a stack of the bigger stack and review each item individually and sign off on them. And then, as Mr. Parentozzi alludes to, at the end, the sheet that would have all of them on it, each of us that had been the signatories would sign on there. And it does take a bit of time. So when we do go back to in-person meetings, getting there a little early to start being able to review it so we're not distracted during the meeting is helpful.
Yeah, Madam Chair, and the reason I bring that up is because there is a, an opinion floating around at the DESE that once the governor rescinds the emergency status, which I believe is gonna be on June 15th, and all of the open meeting laws requirements go back into effect and remote or virtual school committee meetings would not be permissible at that time.
So, so that's interesting. Is it, will there be an option for people to zoom in? Just because I feel like there's better community participation?
Almost all those lesson meetings have been, I wonder if we can utilize that in kind of a format where.
Like a hybrid.
Remember how there have been some meetings that have happened at town hall that have been hybrid? We had entertained that idea earlier in the year and it hadn't been possible technologically. But then I think things have changed. Is that right, Mr. Parentozzi?
Yes, the, at town hall, there's a new video system in place. We haven't used it since it's been new. No one's used it actually. But we would need some training on that and it is definitely going to be possible to have an in-person meeting for the school committee members and then to virtually attend as a community member. So we will, we will figure that, all that out, hopefully. Before COVID hit, we tried that at the, at the town level. And because of the antiquated equipment that we had, it was not successful.
What we did do before was we had, we had the live broadcast onto television though, which was, which I know we can do via Zoom as well, but it takes coordination with the town. It's a little bit, it's a little bit complicated, but it was simple before because we had a videographer there transmitting directly to the television, which didn't enable participation from home, but it did enable viewing, which was nice.
Yeah.
The presentation from home is nice.
Yeah, I'll have the IT, our IT specialist, Charles, look at various ways of doing it by cellphone or by Zoom or, you know, so that we have the TV on the local access channel and then some, some methodology of an exchange of question to answer or interaction with community members.
Thus far, when I was chair, you know, my Ms. Lee, I'll just share really quickly that there had been discussion of trying to enable our meetings to be on television, our Zoomed meetings to be on public access television. The complicating factor was that our schedule would sometimes conflict with other town meetings. Also being held by Zoom at the same time. And so in order to reliably be able to zoom onto public access television, we had to really sync our schedule better with town hall. And it, it seemed harder, it seemed to pose more difficulties with our schedule that was already approved for the year than the benefit when we were able to zoom and have people opt to attend via these type of screens instead, in my, in my judgment at that time. So I didn't pursue changing our dates in order to enable us to do that yet. So I felt like access was there for our community as needed. So you know, that was an issue before.
Well, June 15th is right around the corner.
It is. So we'll have to make sure that there's no, there are no conflicts with our meetings, other meetings that could be at town hall. Now that we're all kind of out of the swing of things when it comes to looking at our parallel calendars.
Yeah, Madam, Madam Chair, when we looked into that, the most conflicts were really with the FinCom. The Board of Selectmen are obviously on a Thursday and wouldn't conflict with our Tuesday meetings, which is why they're set up that way. But the FinCom, the town, the town administrator wanted the FinCom to be broadcast every time they met. So, and that was, and that's obviously understandable. So we, I made myself a note. I will look, look into it on Thursday, June 3rd, when I have a meeting, a department head meeting.
In the past, when we did have in-person conflicts like that, the school committee would sometimes just meet downstairs in town hall instead of the big room upstairs. The only real detriment to that was the inability to broadcast onto television for that meeting.
Right.
But as you're alluding to, Mr. Parentozzi, there can be other means of utilizing technology perhaps that Mr. Lockwood could help with too, and we can think about that.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I respectfully ask you to entertain a motion for $23,910.75 for the bill rolls of May 25th, 2021.
I'd like to make a motion to approve $23,910.75 for invoices dated 5/25/2021.
Thank you, Ms. Karas. Could I have a second to that motion?
All second.
All in favor, by show of hands, Ms. Dan, Ms. Karas, Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Anderson, and myself. All right, moving on to old business and other pending matters. Mr. Parentozzi?
Mr. Parentozzi, do you mind if I interrupt? Just ask a quick question. It's Ms. Anderson. I, I wondered, is it, it's a rookie question. Do we have to approve everything on school committee, every, every single expenditure? Some of those were so small. I just wondered what the, is there a statute or something like that about that? That's different than my own experience.
Yeah, that's a really, actually a very good question. And the short answer is, yep. When we get audited on an annual basis, the auditor will pull a stack of invoices.
Yep.
And they will look for oversight approval. That is one of the primary responsibilities of a school committee and school committee members. Basically, it's hiring a few people, including the superintendent and safe, health and safety, obviously. Having a policy manual that is appropriate and legal and financial oversight. That's really under ed reform since 1994. That's what a school committee does. So the short answer is yes.
Okay. I had asked because in my, in my own experience with the public system, we had set up, there's certain thresholds, right? So there's oversight over every, everything. Down to the penny, but there's thresholds for superintendents to sign on a certain level, but the, you know, the auditors can pick any, any group of invoices they might want to pick and know that, that we had followed the thresholding protocols that our version of school committee set up. And so, but I wasn't sure how it worked in a public district system, so it sounds like it's different. So that's fine. Just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, let me belabor the point slightly. Because the school committee does not meet typically twice a month in July and August, even though those meetings are previously scheduled. Typically, the chair asks the school committee and the superintendent. And lots of times, there's a gap between the second week of July and the fourth week of August. So the school committee does vote the superintendent authority to pay bills and to take other actions like with grants during the summer. On a theoretical basis, the school committee could create a set of protocols that would authorize the superintendent to take financial action on certain levels of expenditures. But the difference, as I understand it, is they would still have to come before you post facto. So it's just easier to do them.
Great. The rookie is quiet now.
No, it's actually a great question. And we have lots of members who are going into the summertime for the first time. So it gave me an opportunity to kind of, you know, explain that. Madam Chair, for A, late this afternoon, after meeting with the chair, I sent the members of the school committee on the email with a motion in it. Since we have a reopening plan, which is in your packet labeled 4A. And about a week ago, actually, it was on the 17th of May, the DESE, the DPH and CDC changed their guidelines for schools. Which now are inconsistent with the voted reopening plan, which goes back to August of 2020. I coined this motion and ran it by the chair prior to distributing it so that I knew that she was in favor of it. So the motion, as I wrote it, does two things. It allows our students and staff to follow the DPH, CDC, and DESE guidelines when they are outside. And it predicts that there will be changes. And rather than having to come back to the school committee for motions every time, this motion would authorize me as superintendent in consultation with the public health nurse and school nurse to amend the protocols at the Johnson Elementary School, as long as they follow DPH, CDC, and DESE guidelines and require, and requirements, and of course, as long as I'm informing you. And that's my recommendation to, to make it simple.
It seems like with reopening, you know, things will be changing, you know, over the next couple of weeks. And I think that this makes sense so that we don't necessarily have to wait until the next school committee meeting to discuss changes to the reopening guidelines. And, you know, as Mr. Parentozzi pointed out, it'll, it will be in line with the state and DESE guidelines. So, you know, I thought that this was a good way to be more, you know, forward-moving in our, in our reopening of the school. I don't know if other school committee members had some thoughts on that.
Fully agree. Totally agree. Make it as easy as possible. Same.
Beginning, it's been to adhere to these guidelines as they move and adjust and whether it be to be more stringent or more liberal, either way, we wanted to trust the science, so it all makes sense to me. Would you like a motion?
Yes, please. Would anybody, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move to amend the comprehensive reopening plan to permit students and staff to remove masks when outdoors consistent with the DPH, CDC, and DESE guidelines and requirements. And further to authorize a superintendent in the future, after informing the school committee members in a consultation with public health nurse and school nurse, to change the JES COVID-19 protocols consistent with the DPH. To change the JES COVID nineteen protocols consistent with the DPH, CDC, and DESE guidelines and requirements.
Thank you.
My second.
Any discussion? Um, all in favor? Uh, by show of hands, uh, Ms. Dan, Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Caris, and Ms. Anderson, and myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh, school committee members. That uh, that'll make it much easier to um amend our protocols. To the ease of our staff and students, because that's really what we want to do. We, you know, as things hopefully light, lighten up. We want to be able to do it ASAP, because it's, it's better, easier, and healthier for the, for the kids and the staff members. So that, that's really uh very helpful. Thank you. Uh, my COVID update is very short. The town of Nahat has not had a, a new case of COVID nineteen since May fifth.
Wow.
Yeah, uh, there's only a hundred and eighty-eight new cases in the state. And it has been reported uh by the Public Health Department to me that there are sixty-eight percent of our residents over the age of twelve are now vac, fully vaccinated. So the guidelines that we are going to follow. Uh, you've all received as parents. But uh, I, I'd say this, I don't want to belabor this, but. Students go outside for recess, they remove their mask when they're lining up in the, in the morning, when they get close and get ready to go in, they put them on. Uh, we keep distance for lunch, whether it's outside or inside. And um, as a remind, as a reminder. That there's a difference between adults and students outside that may be. Hard to really comprehend. That our fully vaccinated staff still has to maintain six-foot distance if unmasked outdoors. A- and students do not. The uh students do not have to wear masks outdoors, whether they maintain physical distance or not. So that's the only difference that's a little, a little wrinkly. Um, you know, out, outdoors, no masks, uh particularly um for students. And uh, we um, we will, of course, take the same precautions when students are eating. Uh, by the way, our students love to eat outside. They think it's a picnic, and students are asking their teachers if we can do it uh when COVID nineteen is over, so. And we have purchased enough picnic tables, I think, to uh get very close to being able to have an outdoor picnic lunch uh when the weather permits. The other change is that uh materials no longer have to be sanitized and or isolated. Student to student, and no extra cleaning is necessary uh for any of those items, so that will. Um, make it a little easier on our custodial staff. We are going to continue with sanitization of hands uh because that's just good health.
Mr. Parentazi, um, can I ask about with um drop off and pickup? Um. Is there, there is no change to the guidelines that parents are still wearing masks at drop off and pickup? Is that correct?
No, it is not.
Oh, okay. I think there was some. You know, I don't think all the parents necessarily understand if that changed.
Yeah, I mean, parents have asked me, and I said, you know, it's up to you. You want to wear the mask, fine, but you don't have to. Same thing with kids when they arrive in the morning. Uh, most kids, I mean, it's a habit now. They've been doing it for uh since September twenty-first. Uh, but uh, a, a young uh. Third grade student today was talking to um his classmates. And schoolmates and said, you know, we don't have to wear our, our, our masks. And, and I said, that's right, you don't, but you can. And then when it was time to go in, I said, okay, now it's time to mask up.
I think part of the reason I ask is because a lot of our kids participate in um sports. And at the sports, they still ask parents to mask, even though we're outside and the, and the athletes no longer have to mask. So um, since it wasn't specifically mentioned when the new guidelines went out. I think um, that's something that's not necessarily clear to all the parents.
Yeah.
So lots of parents might continue to still wear them, but I just wanted to bring it up and ask.
Yeah, I think the difference, as I view it, is that when I'm in a, on a driveway in my car. Or on a public thoroughfare, uh, I'm not in a school. Uh, and a private organization can be more rigid than we can. Because, you know, there's, there's no state law that says you have to play Little League baseball.
Right.
There is a state law that says your kids have to go to school between the ages of six and six and seventeen, and of course, we all know that that's really to graduation. So we're held to a different level of um civil rights.
Uh, okay.
I think it's also a great point, if I may say, Madam Chair. Um, that we should make it clear to parents their options. Because I, I was in a situation today where I saw five parents and I wanted to say something. Um, but I didn't because I didn't want to presume that they would want to take their mask off. So I think it'd be good to get that message out that it's optional. Um, at that point, is it, is that?
Absolutely. We'll put it in the newsletter, um, or send an email home. If, if you think it's important enough to send the special, uh, the, the newsletter is on Friday. Uh, if you think it's important enough to send it out earlier, we can do that by email and, and text. Um, I leave that to the, the school committee and, and Mr. Andrews, but. We did put that in the original message. But it wasn't exact, it wasn't exactly what you're talking about now. It wasn't exactly about drop off. And pickup. That's a little bit different.
I think it's, I defer to Mr. Andrews on this personally, um, whatever you prefer, if it be a, a message sent out sooner or just waiting for the newsletter. I don't think there's a great sense of urgency personally, but either way, it'd be fine. Whatever you like, but I don't know everyone else, but.
I agree.
A brief email, I think, would be, make sense.
Sure, thanks.
Yeah, we don't get enough e- emails, Mr. Andrews. Let's give us another one.
You are right that unfortunately, not everyone probably reads the newsletter, so a separate email might actually get more attention.
Yeah, with a good subject line.
I agree.
Right.
So uh, that's really my, my COVID nineteen uh update. It's uh. Hopefully, they'll get shorter and easier and more positive as we go along.
Hopefully, we won't need them eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah, after June fifteenth, right?
That's right. Yep, when the emerg, the uh state of emergency is lifted, we uh will have a whole new set of circumstances. The information I get from DESE informally is that uh. The DESE is going to keep things relatively the same as they are now right to the end of the school year, because it's such a, a short period of time. So, but we'll see. Sometimes that changes at a press conference.
Yeah.
So um, Madam Chair, I'll go right to the Public Library Partnership, which is four C. Uh, good news is that um, the draft that you have in your packet. Uh, was based on a meeting I had with the president of the uh Nahat Teachers Association. And I have shared that with uh Ms. Hawks, the Sharon Hawks, the uh director of library services for the town of Nahat. And she has uh okayed it. It, it just, it didn't change much. It kind of reorganized the objectives and it, it kind of. Uh, made it clear that when students are in the school. And the children's librarian is working with them, they're still the responsibility of the school department. That's really what we, we were seeking. And, and I tried to say it in a, a very um collegial way, and I, and I know. There was no animosity whatsoever, but it's, I think it's important for that recognition. I have not had final word from the NTA. Uh, I actually um. Sort of. Sent an email that said, um, my last email said, hey, we got to move forward. You know, let's go. Um, because uh, I'm sure Ms. Hawks is ready to hire. The children's librarian, and it really would be nice if prior to that hiring process. There was a clear understanding of the responsibilities of that position. You know, we don't want somebody to be hired and, and then something changes. That's, that's not fair to anyone in any position. So I will continue to um. Remind the NTA that we need their opinion. My own opinion is that um. We have the authority as administrators to have someone come into our, our school and work with our students. At our discretion. But um, there may be some validity to the fact that a paraprofessional. Uh, member of the NTA ESP would have to be present. That's really what we're debating, I think.
And the cost to our school budget, should we pursue this collaboration? Would you mind reminding us?
Certainly. Uh, my understanding is. That the children's librarian position was fully funded at town meeting. So there will be no requirement for the uh school department to help fund that position. Uh, my understanding is that if the NTA insists on us having a paraprofessional in the room. When the children's librarian who works for the Nahat Public Library. Is doing their library service teaching, that's already in our budget.
Okay, thank you.
And uh, Madam Chair, I just noticed that the uh library director is at our meeting. Hi, Sharon.
Hey, Tony, good to see you. Um, yes, I can underline exactly what he just said. Um, the library uh received at town meeting. Um, the proposed budget uh that the Board of Trustees had brought forward. That would include fully funding uh children's librarian. I should be able to put out tomorrow um a job search. That includes that that person have experience, uh substantive experience working with children. Does this mean I would have a full-fledged uh school librarian with teacher certification? Probably not, uh, but I will certainly have my ears out for somebody at that level. I have worked with people at that level in the past. Um, and hired one, in fact, in the past, so um, I know what I'm looking for. And we'll see uh who responds to the job search.
Thank you for the.
Yeah, we're very excited about this. Uh, it will deepen and broaden our students. Uh, knowledge uh and use of libraries and research and uh. All kinds of literacy-based subjects. Uh, a great, a great deal. It will also put our students more on a level playing surface. When they go to the middle school with children that go to Swamp Scott. So I, I publicly want to say thank you to Sharon and, and to the uh library board. For uh providing us with this opportunity. It's a great opportunity.
No, thank you very much, Tony. Um, yeah, I feel the same way. Um, from the time I first got here in December twenty fifteen. And heard that there was a, a potential of a collaboration with or without funding um from the school. It's always been for me about the students, and so if there's some way that we can help the students. Um, make it better for them with the uh online and uh paper literacy, I'm all for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Madam Chair, that's that update. Uh, next item is four D. The solar energy and LED projects update. As I reported at the last couple of meetings, I'll start backwards, as I often do in my life. There is no update about the LED. We're waiting for the grant application by the Green. Um, Communities Committee um that would prioritize our LED uh conversion. In terms of solar, there are a couple of updates, uh, none of which are rendered to paper at this time. In order for us to go forward with the PPA. Which is the um agreement, the power potential agreement with SOLET. We have to become a member of a, a nonprofit organization called Power Option. They used to be part of state government and then split off, and now they are an independent. Energy um overseer for nonprofits and public entities. And what becoming a member of a Power Option affords us is the opportunity to um. Do a contract without going through a competitive bidding process, without getting involved in um legal issues. Because their contract has been approved by the provide, the provision uh department of the uh state. The question that is at, on the table now, and it's not on my table, because I've asked the question. Does the town want me to have the contract with Power Option? And that will limit the Power Option PPA to use by the school district. Or does the town have bigger plans for solar power? And they want the entire town to have the contract? And um, and we would simply be part of the town. It's a real cheap, uh, uh, excuse me, it's a real inexpensive, efficient contract with Power Option. I believe it's about a thousand dollars a year. And uh, that alone, just to use a, a contract that's been vetted by their attorneys. And not having to pay somebody to, to vet a new contract. I mean, just on that alone, we're going to come out ahead. Um, I've asked the question, and obviously with town meeting just recently over. Uh, there's been a delay in the response. But as soon as I get that answer, we will have the, the contract. Either the town or the school district were out, we'll have the contract with the uh, with Power Option. And uh, we move forward. Uh, so that is ready to go. A second question that I mentioned to you once before that is really no closer to being answered. Uh, is the following. When we go to LED, we're going to use a lot less of electricity. We don't want to produce more solar energy. Than we have the capability of using under the current guidelines. Because we pay eleven point five cents per kilowatt hour. And the grid will pay us between three and four cents a kilowatt hour. Back for energy we produce and don't use. So we want to do one of a, a couple of different things. One is, we want to produce. As much electricity as we use. Even with the LED conversion. Or we want to guarantee that if, because what's coming down the pike is word that the uh Biden administration is going to change that. It was never intended to be that way. It was never intended for a private residence. To have a net meter, meter, metering arrangement with National Grid where they buy and sell at eleven and a half cents. And for public entities not to have it. It just never got put into the law. So. Power Option is telling me it's close to becoming in the law, but what I want to know. Is it going to be retroactive if we go forward before? Um, and we're right at the cusp of having all those answers. As a matter of fact, I exchanged emails today with Mr. Gray, who is the executive director of Power Option. So that's where we're sitting. We would love to go forward um ASAP. Uh, and what that would mean um would be. Good fall weather before the weather turns in the fall. Uh, that would be our, our, our druthers. The LED, of course, is indoor work. It can be done second shift, it can be done in the summer, and it can be done on weekends. But uh, the outdoor work is, is. But the outdoor work is 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 more liable to have a a weather-related issue. So we want to move forward. It may, in fact, come to fruition that we put this on hold for a year until things settle down and settle out. I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but it could. I apologize if I was long-winded, but it's it's not simple. At least it's not to me. It gets convoluted.
It's tough because you don't want to wait because it could be such a cost, you know, saving option. But on the other hand, if there's an opportunity to save more money, if we wait a little bit longer, that seems to make sense. So.
Well, from the from the first time I brought this to you to now, the cost savings is $50,000 more. So we've already had one of those, you know, a delay turning into a benefit to the town. So I'm not saying this will, but you know, it's happened once. The $207,000 savings over the 20-year life, when I first brought that to you with 142 kilowatt hour solar array was $150,000. So it's 57,000 more, which is which is great. Who knows?
It sounds like you'll have more information in the next couple of weeks. So that's good.
And well, in early July, we'll also have the LED answer whether or not we got the grant. So, you know, not getting that grant would make the question moot.
Right.
Because we know at our current rate of electric usage, we won't produce more than we can use. Madam Chair, the 4E is the budget update. I continue to be very pleased to be able to tell you that our FY '21 budget continues to be in the black. We are continuing to be able to purchase things for the future as permitted by law. And when we when we talk about facility update, I'll talk about using a substantial amount of the money that was saved from various accounts. And we're going to encumber a substantial amount of money from fiscal '21 for the rooftop unit. Madam Chair, I'll move on to 4F. The Swamp Scott MOU update. Once again, we are in verbal agreement with the school district in Swamp Scott. And I want to thank the two members of the committee who participated in that. The language and details are currently being worked out and then they will be put into writing. And I'm suspecting that before July, we would be able to have a signed agreement until the '26, '27 school year, which would be great. Once again, next school year is under the current contract. So the next five-year contract doesn't start until September 2022.
When are we discussing that? An executive session?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, we will be. The members of the school committee and I will be discussing the contractual terms in executive session because Mass General Law provides that as a reasonable use of executive session because speaking about contractual terms in public can put a school district or a public entity in a negative bargaining position. And today we approved our first facility use, our outdoor use by a non-school entity. So we are moving forward with other people going through the process. And the only change, as I see it, from our historical process is before I sign it, I have a conversation with either the public health nurse and our school nurse or one of them to just make sure that the request is consistent with the in the guidelines that are in in place. And here's the tough one, or will be in place when the event actually happens. So that's the best we can do.
If there's no other discussion, we can move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Summer activity planning is the summer activities, the academic activities are all scheduled. Staff is all hired. All the paperwork is clear. Cory's fingerprints, everything is done. Town Hall has been forwarded the hiring agreements. So we're ready to go. Today I announced to the staff at a faculty meeting that we're also looking to do an academic acceleration program the last week before school starts in the summer. And that would be voluntary for parents and students, of course. But we're looking for two or three staff members who want to start school a week early for an academic acceleration program. The DESE released its preliminary information about ESER III. We are going to get about $170,000 that can be spent up until the last day of August 2024. That money is to be used for a variety of things, all of which are pointed towards catching students up post-COVID-19 pandemic. So it's mental and social and emotional health support. It's reading for primary students. It's reading science and math for elementary students. It's AP courses for high school students. So it's all about catching up. And again, I just read that for the first time yesterday. We've had conversations about it. But I will be bringing things to you in the near future about that, those funds too. Once again, it's federal money. We want to spend what's allotted to us because if we don't spend it, someone else is going to. Hopefully, our own staff will step forward. But if not, we will go public and advertise these positions outside of the NTA.
Is this something that we could use to fund programs for, like in terms of thinking about, you know, mental health resources? Some of the programs that we've done in the past for, you know, anxiety or, you know, for parents and family members to attend? And how to support, you know, the students?
There's a sticky on my desk that says MPY.
Yeah.
School Improvement Goals Four and Five. So yes, short answer is yes.
It'll be really nice to start getting some of those programs back. And I know that, you know, some were incorporated already this year on a limited basis, but it'll be great to start really sinking into those things again.
And as the President of the Board of Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth, I can tell you that that organization has learned an enormous amount about utilizing electronic means to make professional development and training easier for people to access. And, you know, we were talking, the chair and I were talking about, you know, babysitting. How that was, may have been a limiting factor. Childcare and adolescent care may have been a limiting factor for people. And MPY has has morphed into, right now, they're 100% virtual for obvious reasons. And the board met last week and it's going, we're going to continue the virtual aspects even when things are back to, quote, "the new normal."
That's wonderful. Like you're saying, accessibility for, you know, lots of different parents and guardian community members. That's great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unless there's other questions, I'll move forward to our facility update. So there's an electronic device on our boilers called a variable frequency drive. And what it does, it supposedly controls the boiler in a the way the transmissions, the new transmissions in our cars controlled the speed that we go. You know, if you remember the way cars used to work in automatic transmission, you would go low and you would get a jolt. You'd go into medium and then you'd get a jolt and then you'd go into drive. Our cars don't do that anymore. There's an electronic device that kind of slides it, you know, from a dead stop ratio to a highway ratio. That's what this thing does to a boiler. And we put a new one in in January 2020 and it failed about a month ago. And I was not a happy camper. So we contacted the company that installed it. It was not, it was a multi-thousand of dollars between the installation and the purchase. And we were able to get the manufacturer to take it back and give us a new one. So we're having one of those installed. As you know, I wasn't happy with the first bid we got for the rooftop unit. And I'm glad I went to another company because now I have found that we only need one aspect of that unit replaced. We only need the heating element of the unit replaced. So we already have all the ducts. We have the ability to hopefully buy one exactly the same size and remove it and put a new one in and hook it up and and do all the things necessary. And I haven't gotten the bid yet, but I was led to believe it would be less expensive. So to make sure, what I'm going to do is encumber the original amount. So I'm going to encumber $40,000, which we do have in the budget for the replacement of the heating rooftop unit.
Now, is that for the facilities update, Mr. Parentozzi?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you like to give the principals' report?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, he wants to give it yesterday.
I'm so out of here. No. May 24th was the original date, but thanks to Google, I updated it. May 25th is the new date on the principals' report, which is what the superintendent is referring to.
He's always, he's always a day ahead.
A day ahead, Dave. The students were really happy to be outdoor and maskless, as we've talked about, and the staff as well. And so we're really taking advantage of that during PE. Also, I know that during PE, we've been able to share balls and bases and all kinds of things. So I know Ms. Palito is really happy about the changes. It opens up a lot of doors and it lets students take another step towards normalcy. So we're pleased about that and it was helpful to have the questions about the changes. We also had Northeastern University return this week. So Monday and Tuesday, they were here. So that was that was today. Thanks to Sierra Munoz, who brought live animals in workshops to the students with a colleague of hers from the university. Each class participated in one program. Typically, they give three programs a year at no cost. And this year, because we just got started with it, we're able to get one out. Excuse me. They're really pleased. It's their first experience with students in person since the pandemic. And so they're glad to get out and see people in person. We also had the Garden Club resume last week with Diana Brandy, meeting with students on Wednesdays and Thursdays. The day before, they changed the guidelines. We mapped everything out. We figured out cones and masks and what they were going to have to do. And the next thing, next day, everything changed and it's a little bit more able to facilitate gardening outside. So that's fantastic. And I want to remind all the parents that this Friday is a professional development day. Students will be dismissed at 11:30 and teachers will be working on a couple of things. One is looking at something called the Acceleration Roadmap, which the superintendent just forwarded to me from the Department of Education. Talks about how we can help all students succeed in September and what we need to do and what we need to think about. It's, I thought it was nice because it really focuses on things that we know are great for all kids, including making connections with families, finding out where the students are at and really being mindful of students as individuals because everyone's had different experiences in this year. And we want to make sure that we're being welcoming and including everybody in the fall. And so I thought that was a nice focus. And so we'll be looking at that this Friday. We'll also be hearing about some teachers who have been trying out an extension of the iReady program. We had, we spoke with the company that makes iReady and they gave us a pilot for the workbooks and curriculum that goes with the full math and the full ELA. And so we'll be discussing that on Friday as well. Not for a soon adoption, but just to have an idea about it because we found that iReady was good with the computer side of education. Then we have a full slate of events coming up. First, the Student Council did a fantastic job getting together for the food drive. That was much appreciated. I was able to deliver that. And I want to thank Camilla Brett for leading that group and giving them space, always very respectful of the students, letting them be the leaders in the program, but also facilitating things. So that was wonderful. They were very appreciative at my brother's table in Lynn. Tomorrow, we'll have a program from Brett Daniels, a musician sponsored by the PTO. This is a second online program. The last one was fantastic with Rob Sarette. And this one is a follow-up to that, adding arts to our curriculum. So thanks to the PTO for putting that together, offering it. And that'll be tomorrow. I'll be sending a link out shortly for everyone to get online at home and in person. This Monday, May 31st, 11:00 AM, is the Memorial Day Recognition Ceremony at Green Lawn Cemetery. Madison Marsh, our sixth grade student, will be reciting the Gettysburg Address for the for the 100th and second time in its history. I have some clippings for you on my report that was carried in the item on May 15th. There's also a PTO meeting coming up on June 8th. Scoops Night on June 10th. We'll have graduation as we discussed on June 16th at 6 o'clock. And a sale car race the following day and then dismissal on June 18th. This will all be listed in detail in the newsletters coming up. And unless there's any questions, that would conclude my report.
And then the Field Day also.
Oh, yes, Field Day as well, of course. Field Day is on June 15th.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
This is very silly, Madam Principal Andrews, but I imagine anyone who might be listening are wondering, the Moving On Ceremony, it happens to be before the last day of school. The subscribers still go to school after the Moving On Ceremony.
Absolutely, absolutely. Please, please do. There's lots of great traditions, chances to see students and still learn too. And so we were keeping in mind the middle school Moving On Ceremony. We always look at the Swamp Scott schedule as well because they're our siblings. And then our last day of school. So this year, the Swamp Scott and Nahat schedules really are closely aligned. And with our students, we deferred. And and so that's why it falls on the day that it does.
Great. Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you for the question.
Mr. Andrews, for the sale car race, is that just for the school or?
No, actually, that's that's been open to the public in the past and I welcome any attendees that would like to attend. It's at the Wharf and grades three through six will walk down for the race. And we typically have members of the Nahat Police Department attend. Other invited guests. And we typically have members of the Nahat Police Department attend, other invited guests, and we would welcome parents and students.
Mr. Andrews, for attendance for the moving on ceremony, well, and I know in past years, school committee has attended. And will that be allowed again this year?
Absolutely. I hope that you received the invitation through Google, but perhaps not today.
I think I did. I wasn't sure whether the school committee or I was going to the sixth grade parent. So, okay, that's great.
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's been, it's been very interesting, even with the Memorial Day, we didn't know until just recently that it was open to the public. And so.
And we got that email today.
We did, we did. So, you know, I, I just appreciate everyone's understanding with the way that COVID nineteen regulations are changing and evolving. We, we scheduled the moving on ceremony to be outside at Nahat Country Club. We could have it indoors at the town hall. But we already had it set that way. I haven't determined how many seats or visited the site yet to determine how many guests will be able to attend. We originally had envisioned a pod setting where families would sit together with their graduate with regulations as they were. But again, that's changing. And so we'll be getting information out shortly and details.
So is the invitation for the school committee to attend in person or virtually? I guess when I saw the invitation, I thought it was like a virtual.
Oh, no, no, no. It's an in-person invitation.
Okay.
I wanted to put it on your calendar as early as I could get it to you.
Yeah.
So I was, as soon as I learned that we.
It's an electronic invitation for an in-person.
In-person meeting.
No, the fun doesn't end. COVID nineteen. So yeah, that is, it is an, and I wanted to put it on your calendar before I sent out a formal email or, you know, regular mail, maybe. My goodness. We'll see.
Mr. Andrews, wow, what's the field day going to look like this year?
Well, we're, we're looking forward to having parents volunteer outside. We did not plan to have inflatables. Just because we're still thinking about, you know, surfaces and, and things like that. So I think that's a wise decision. But we'll have all the games that we typically have. The main thing is that kids can share things. So they can pass an egg to somebody else and carry it the other way back. All, a lot of the types of things that we typically do are allowed outside.
So are there still going to be teams with colors?
Yep. Yeah, we'll have team rally on Monday, on Tuesday, rather, on June first. We have our, our rally in all of our colors. Students will get together and learn who, who's going to be on their team. And I think that, I think it'll be mostly a typical field day.
Oh, great. A mixture of different grades on each team. Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Right, right.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah, students can be close to each other as long as they're outside.
That's right.
I do expect everything to be focused on outside. It always is anyhow. It's never good when field day moves inside. So, so we'll continue that tradition. We expect to have the same traditions after school as what, I mean, after lunch as well with water balloon tosses and those pieces. So yeah, things are really changing and we're just trying to remember all the parts and how they connect to the new regulations or if they do at all. And what the best decision is for everything.
It could be the most celebrated field day we've ever had.
I know. I mean, it just sounds so normal. I'm amazed.
Yeah, I, I had a student get out of their car. One Ashley Sherlock and she said, oh my goodness, I can't believe I'm getting out of my car without my mask on. And I, I felt the same for her. I said, I can't believe I'm seeing you jump out of your car without your mask on and it's all okay. So it's, it's quite an adjustment to go the other way and we're really pleased about it.
That's great.
Another question about masks for field day. So I, I looked at the volunteer submission form and the only guidelines that were on there were just, you know, the sanitation of the hands. I didn't see anything about adult volunteers wearing masks. Is that something that's going to be required?
My expectation would be that they would follow the same requirements as, as teachers, which is if they are proximal to students such as sanitizing, coordinating games, pretty much most things, they'll probably need to be masked. So I, I did put it in there that it should just follow the guidelines and that's the guidelines right now. You'll see teachers outside masked. They don't have to be if they can be distant. But if they're one-to-one handing out science materials, they'll need to be masked. So again, that's the gray area that we really have to define for people, but we have a nice email list of who's volunteering and I can, we can communicate things to them. But everyone's agreed to follow the COVID nineteen protocols as they are at the moment of field day as interpreted by the school committee of Nahat.
And so closer to the field day, you'll just make it clear to everybody who's volunteering what exactly the guidelines are at that moment, just because they changed so much.
Yeah.
Well, because I'm. Probably, my imagination, I, I imagine we'll stay on the conservative side of that as well. For an event like this so that we can be inclusive, that everyone feels comfortable and, and that we make sure that we're, you know, doing the right thing.
I think Michelle's making the point though that, and was that what you were saying now on the fifteenth?
Right. Fifteenth, it's done.
For schools too, I'm not sure.
For everybody. I, that's what I think. I think that's what it says, but I think, yeah, we should probably.
I'll make sure I read it closely. The.
I don't exactly know what's happening on the fifteenth, other than the state of emergency is being lifted, but I don't know what that means.
Like implementation for different things like, you know, department of elementary and secondary education.
Right.
May provide guidelines at different times, different date.
Yeah, maybe I can help. On June fifteenth, the plan is for the state of emergency to be lifted generally. However, if you get it on an MBTA, you are not, there are going to be restrictions. It's not universal.
Right.
So it'll take a while for it to percolate. So I, and this Monday on the twenty ninth, there's another, on the twenty ninth of May, there's another new set of guidelines that.
For state reopening.
That we don't have any in, you know, we know what's happening on June fifteenth, but I'm not quite sure what's happening on the May twenty ninth. So we'll just have to wait and be nimble. And be good, I mean, this is helping us be better communicators down the line because things change and you know, you can't, you can't decide a month ago what you're going to do two weeks from now. You gotta remember that. The questions that the members of the school committee were asking, Mr. Andrews, just triggered in my mind that maybe we need to put out a more inclusive narrative about field day. So that people have a little bit more information. Because we have it inside, but I'm not sure. You know, we may get a whole bunch more volunteers, for example, if parents knew, you know, what was happening. You know, and that they were invited and, you know, how things are being handled. So we'll work on that.
I mean, it was clear that parents were invited, but until right now, I thought that field day was probably going to look really different from previous years and I'm, I'm excited to hear that it's going to be more of a typical, you know, field day with the, you know, team colors and you know, all the activities other than, you know, the bound, the inflatable, you know, bouncy houses and whatnot. And I think that if you described what field day is going to be like, you know, parents will be happy and you know, might want to be more willing to participate. And also, you know, even if they can't participate, it's just nice to know that the kids are going to have this. I mean, field day is so great and you know, such a fun experience in the hunt. And then I do think it's, you know, I think it's perfect to just express that. You know, whoever chooses to volunteer will have to follow the guidelines and just leave it at that because until the day it happens, they just have to be willing to follow whatever the guidelines are. And then as it gets closer and we know what those guidelines are going to be, I think it'll be important to just be really clear with the volunteers what that expectation is.
Yeah, really, you know, masks or not is really the only real issue.
Right.
And we'll, we'll have, we have more masks than we know what we're going to do with. So.
And just like you said, people are always welcome to wear masks too, if you're not. You know, even if the requirement's not there, they're welcome to wear them. But really, you were saying to Mr. Parentozzi, we just don't know what sub-sections of our state are going to be still wearing masks. Like in the hospital, we're wearing masks for the indefinite future and, you know, the same on the MBTA right now. And so schools, we'll just wait and see with adults and inside and outside and all of that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. So we'll move on to public comment, which I know there are no members in the public in attendance today, but I don't know if.
Return to normalcy.
Right, exactly. You know, and, and actually in the conversation with Mr. Andrews, it made me think of something that I think is appropriate to bring up. I've had a couple of members, you know, family members in the community approach me and totally informally, just honestly, just as a mom, not even as a school committee member, wondering about next year and before and after school. And I know it's something that we've brought up at previous meetings along the lines of, you know, it looks like it's going to be possible in the fall. And, you know, I'll just pass along that there are some community members where, you know, the decision as to whether or not to enroll their student at the Johnson School really hinges on the opportunity for before and after school. So obviously, we can't predict what's going to happen. I mean, God forbid, something could take a turn for the worse, but anticipating that things continue as they are. I, I'm guessing because we're mixing the classes together for field day, that it seems really very likely unless something unexpected comes up that we will have a before and after school program in the fall. Is that fair to say?
I, that's, that's more than fair to say. That's our, our goal would be to provide the services that our community members, parents, guardians need and the children need. And right now, from everything I hear, it feels like and sounds like, you know, those, those little messages you get by A, what people say and B, what they don't say. It sounds like September is going to be a, a full opening.
Okay. So if family members contacted the Johnson School asking about the plans for the fall, they would get that answer that it's planned to be a, a normal school year.
Yeah. I'm going to wait till after Monday, the, you know, the twenty ninth of May, see what happens on that day. And then we'll even send, we'll send something out more informative and formal.
Do those messages though go to people who don't have students currently at the Johnson School or that, that those?
Eligible, families with eligible age students within the town.
That's great.
Yeah, we have.
Posting, maybe even posting something on the school website.
Yep.
You know, might be a great update.
And then school community members could feel free to post on, you know, social media too, or encourage people to look at the website or that, whatever we know factually.
In terms of its support for a full reopen, is that, is that what I'm following? That, that that's what we are reading right now as being the case and that we want to support that happening? Am I reading the committee right? Okay. I mean, I think the two cents that I'll throw in here is that the commissioner of education has given all indication that that is what he is one hundred percent behind, which is, you know, a following of science and a full reopen. And that seems to be also the appetite for the governor and the administration. So it would behoove us to follow suit. And I think that, you know, the, I agree with you, chairwoman, that the, our push around social media and whatnot, I'm really trying with the professor, the very formal. It's very different from my walk, but that, that we support that because I think that, I think that it's easy for people to get hamstrung in these like, you know, one-off situations and with, with vaccination, you know, this is going to be okay. Like this is going to be okay. And we need to return to school as normal. And I think, you know, there have been a few exceptions. There, some districts went after these virtual height, these virtual situations around high school. But other than that, in a couple of one-offs, like there is a huge push to get districts back in person. So for us to support Mr. Andrews, Mr. Parentozzi and that, I think feels really right. And it helps people. I think that there are parents out that they're like, well, what if this like really wacky offhand situation happened? And I think it does feel like exactly, you know, I see Michelle shaking her head like, you know, like it is incumbent upon us to really push the science here that we've got a job to do and they're doing the job, like our job is to support them doing their job. So I, I, I feel, obviously feel strongly about, about this piece.
The school committee's language throughout this past year, at least I'll speak for myself, but I think the whole committee was unanimous in this was just that our job is to create the most equitable environment for students as possible. And our, what we felt our charge was, since we were able to do that in a safe way within the school building, was to open up right away. And I would be in favor of continuing to, like in my mind, the most equitable situation is always having our doors open. And that includes before and after care. Now, if we can safely do so, and I think as we're all saying, I think we are moving that way. If we want to be able to have everyone be able to send their kids to public school. And, and so I think that's definitely what I'm committed to as well. And the sooner the better as far as getting the doors open for before and after and everything. Make this really fair. And we've had that, you know, this has been the most fair we could, in my opinion. I think we have done, we have done, but Mr. Parentozzi and the attorneys have done, like you're saying too, a fantastic job of maximizing our access for everyone throughout this year. So it's just exciting to think we can even resume more.
Yeah, I think the limiting factor would be the concept of cohort mixing. You know, before school and after school is all about cohort mixing. That's the only thing that separates it from any other activity we have in our school. And as soon as, it certainly sounds like we already know the cohort mixing outdoors is perfectly permissible and all, and physical distancing is not required. As soon as that shifts to indoor, we're golden.
It seems like, but even, even if worst case scenario, I'm speculating, you know, that's not what we should be doing, but if, if we take the luxury of speculating, you know, the efficacy of mask wearing has been proven to be so good that worst case scenario, if we had to mask for mixing cohorts, it seems like would probably, again, this is all probably in speculating, but it just feels, it feels more possible now than it ever did before. That we could employ things that we know how to make it safer and make it possible.
I also, I also look at like what's happened in Little League here, you know, in the hunt, like every single boy in the first grade is in either Little League or soccer. And most of them are Little League. And there's no conversation about, they're all mixing. Everybody's mixing. And the soccer team is mixing, the Little League team are fixing, there are multiple age ranges. Everybody's kids on the sidelines are mixing. And even though you're supposed to wear a mask, I'll tell you, fifty to seventy-five percent of the parents are not wearing masks anymore. And you know what? We're fine. So, you know, I think, I, I, and I also hear, they're definitely different. I just put on my Little League hat, you know. But I, I think that I hear what Mr. Parentozzi said about there being different rules, right, in different places. But I think we're moving in the right direction, I guess. Right. I, I, I mean, and I actually, I have lupus and I feel, maybe I'm being too, I just feel like I'm, yay, we made it through, you know, many of us made it through and we're going to be okay, you know, because we have taken such great care. Like I have no idea how elementary school educators did this. I really don't. And I barely, and you know, I'm in homage of my high school educators and I, speaking for my professional hat and I just, I think, you know, we just got to, as leaders, we got to keep it moving in the right direction so these folks can do their job. Thanks, Lauren, for that.
Okay.
Is there any other public correspondence? uh, public correspondence with any of the other school committee members that you'd like to share?
No.
Yeah, same here, nothing.
Um, so we can move on to new business, which is the superintendent's evaluation. And, um, since the evaluation was done, um, with the previous school committee members, I actually asked Ms. Ms. Sherlock to summarize, uh, the evaluation. Thank you. Explain.
Sure. So, uh, just to review process, uh, with the superintendent's review, each school committee member receives a blank form, um, on which to evaluate the superintendent. And each of us complete it and submit it to Chris Captoz at the school office, who synthesized is the data and puts it together in a, um, a compact form with no identifying features at all about who provided which line of it, of evaluation. And, uh, provides it to the chair of the school committee. And since I was still the chair while this happened, that's why I'm reviewing it. Um, but basically I'll just give a brief overview that I don't think it'll come as any surprise to members of this committee or administration, but, uh, Mr. Parentozzi certainly exceeded or, or met every measure we had set forth. Um, I feel extremely lucky to have been able to provide such a glowing review and with complete honesty, the only measures in which I think that really weren't exemplary were things that were barriers this year because of COVID, to creating some of these things being even possible. So, uh, when, when things were met as opposed to exceeded, it was very understandable. Um, so just to highlight some of the skills, um, evaluated or comment that was felt to be representative of the group was, Mr. Parentozzi truly stood out as a leader during an extremely challenging year. He's done an amazing job reopening the school while ensuring the safety and emotional wellbeing of the students and staff. Despite many competing needs, he never lost sight of the needs of the school building contracts, other operational issues. Our school is incredibly fortunate to benefit from Mr. Parentozzi's expertise. He's nothing short of exemplary. I think that was indeed very representative of, um, the comments of our committee. So the other bit here is, um, under family and community engagement. There was a comment, again, felt to be representative of the group that said, Mr. Parentozzi is very visible and approachable as superintendent. He has an open door way of practice. He's present in the school community and engages regularly with students and families. And under professional culture, Mr. Parentozzi has a strong professional outlook and encourages others to practice similarly. Um, so I think that's the, the overall, uh, feedback from Mr. Parentozzi. And, um, thank you for making this easy, Mr. Parentozzi, this year. We feel really lucky. Thank you very, very much.
Well, thank you. And I feel very lucky to and fortunate to be able to service your superintendent. It's a pleasure. Um, the only thing I want to make sure that the school committee is aware of, and I know you are, is that, um, like anything in life, no one walks a path alone. Uh, it's a team. Uh, the school committee has provided extraordinary leadership ever since I've been here. Cognizant of, uh, student needs and always putting students first. There's almost no politics in the school committee as, you know, as a former urban superintendent, I can assure you, I know the difference. Uh, and, um, Mr. Andrews, uh, Debbie Canal, as my two administrative, uh, colleagues, did a phenomenal job this year and in past years. Uh, and the staff was remarkable. They, uh, I mean, we kept kids in school since September 21st. And, you know, now it's, it's kind of, you know, the adaptability of Homo sapiens is kind of remarkable. We quickly adapt to normal and forget about what it was like better than any other species. That's one of our strengths. Unfortunately, it's the yin and yang of life. It's also a weakness. We forget how hard it was to keep kids in school in October. Nobody was doing it. I think, uh, 8% of the elementary schools in the Commonwealth were open. So, uh, the team that we have here works well together. It's, it's all about kids. It's all about education. Uh, we're already looking to the future to make up some ground. The interesting thing is, we're going to be making up and accelerating academic learning. Uh, and we have perhaps one of the the groups of students who need acceleration the least because they were in school the most. But we're going to do it anyway because let's take advantage of it. So once again, I want to, I want to thank you and I want to simply say it's, it's a pleasure. And, uh, your comments are extraordinarily generous. Thank you.
They're honored.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Parentozzi.
Yes, thank you.
I'll say it before and I'll say it again. I, I just, I'm, we're so lucky to have had the school committee we had and you guys and at the administrative positions, just seeing all the turmoil that my staff went through with schools and it was just, I felt always so lucky to be part of the hot public schools. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Parentozzi, would you like to give an update on personnel matters?
I would love to. Our director of special education, as you know, is Mary DeGuardia. She, uh, all the paperwork has been filed and she successfully, uh, had all of the paperwork. She, uh, will file, uh, her, her payroll paperwork with Town Hall, uh, either this week or at the beginning of next week. She will start on July 1st. Uh, she's an experienced special education director, um, who currently is finishing a a part-time gig in, uh, Arlington. Uh, and obviously she will be part-time for us too, as a retiree. I want to make sure that, uh, I thank Debbie Canal for giving us five extraordinary years. She's an amazing woman. You all know, I've known Debbie for years and, and worked with her for, uh, a decade in, in Somerville. And, uh, elevated her to the director of special education there in Somerville and, um, she, uh, she made all of us look good, um, and continues to do so. So that's, um, that's moving forward. Uh, today Debbie, um, was thanked by our faculty. She was at our, her last functional faculty meeting. I'm sure we will have other meetings as the year progresses. More of a celebratory nature, but, um, we made sure that we said thank you to Debbie. And of course she was gracious as always. Uh, our fourth grade teacher vacancy, which, um, Mr. Andrews is beginning to put his team together. He has asked, um, faculty members, and I know there has already been one volunteer to serve on the interview team. And that will be finalized within the next couple of days and, and that will move forward. Just as a reminder, uh, the current fourth grade teacher has a contract to the end of the school year. So if that individual wishes to be considered for the, of permanent position, that individual needs to go through the application process. That's typically the way we do it when someone leaves midstream like that. And that gives, uh, us an opportunity to seek the, the, uh, the best candidates. And that's really it. Everything else is pretty, pretty status quo. We are beginning to cut back a little bit on our, um, remote staff. Uh, we are down to four remote students or five? I think it's five. Um, in two grades, right? So, um, so those hours are being culled. Um, and then, um, other activities are taking their place. So example, we have the, the community, um, garden open, so we, we have more activity out there. So it's kind of shifting. And everything else is.
Are those staff members being used for those other activities? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, to, to a certain extent. So two things are happening. One is the hours are being cut back.
Okay.
And two, uh, if an opportunity presents itself for, uh, a different type of activity, like the community garden, working in the community garden with students or substituting for an absent staff member, they, uh, those individuals are taking advantage of that.
So were the staff members not contracted through the end of the school year?
Uh, yes, they are, but, uh, when I, when I hire staff members who are not appointed positions, I make sure their appointment letter, uh, clearly indicates that they're hiring, uh, their status is an at-will employee.
Oh, that's great.
And what that technically means is they have no guarantees. You know, we try to be as
Right.
caring and as giving as possible, which is why we have them doing other things.
Right. That's great.
Mr. Parentozzi, as far as, um, personnel and staff go for the staff coming here, Mr. Andrews as well. Um, so far we had two kindergarten uh, teachers this year. Well, we have two teachers assigned to first grade next year.
Uh, at this time, that is the plan.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Andrews has not indicated how he is working with those two staff members to make it a, um, an easy transition. On a theoretical basis, both kindergarten teachers will return. One is a kindergarten teacher and one is a first grade teacher.
And as far as we know, that's the only grade that would need two classes at this time.
At this time, that is the, um, yes, sure answer. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any, uh, business from the committee?
No.
I don't have anything.
Would you like a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Yeah, if there's no other business, if we could have a motion to adjourn into executive session.
I'll be happy to make a motion to, um, enter into executive session, not to reconvene to open session, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations and for approval of executive session minutes from May 11th, 2021. And make that motion to adjourn into executive session, not to reopen to open meeting at 8:34 PM.
Can I second?
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Miss Dan, Miss Karen, Miss Sherlock, Miss Anderson or myself? Great.
Bye, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Bye.
All right. Boom. We're in executive session. At 8:35.
Oh, I was just catching up here.
So, for executive session, um, sorry, I'm just pulling up the minutes. Um, our first order of business is discussing negotiations with union personnel. Mr. Parentozzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At 4:00 PM yesterday, I entered into a Zoom meeting with, uh, the president of the NTA, the vice president of the NTA and two professional status, uh, licensed educators. We started at 4:02. They informed me that they had an offer. They are of the opinion that for a variety of reasons, due to the potential uncertainties of next year, that in addition, that the staff at this time is exhausted. And they do not want to enter into a lengthy process of negotiations. And that they have had some difficulty contacting the MTA leadership because their field rep retired around the, uh, January 1st and they only recently made contact with their field rep. That they are of the opinion that the best thing for them to do would be to roll the current contract over for one year without any change of language other than a 2.5% increase in the, um, the salary schedule and stipends. And they made that request and I informed them appropriately and correctly that I would bring it to you. About two hours ago, I forwarded you the, um, cost of living in the greater Boston area over the last three years. So, I wanted you to have that be, um, because for the last three years, our teachers have had a 2% raise, a 2.5% raise and a 2.5% raise. While the, while the COLA, excuse me, the, um, CPI looks the way it does on the graph that I sent you. So the, um, I, I would imagine that the, the two possibilities are that, um, the school committee members accept the request to roll over the contract for one year and start, we would start negotiations in the fall. Uh, and accept the 2.5% request for both, uh, the salary schedule and stipends. Or counter with less than 2.5%. Or reject both. There are the three options as I see them.
I understand what, what's being said about the exhaustion on the part of the union member, you know, the union representatives and, um, leadership, I should say, and staff. I, I understand where they're coming from. At the same time, um, I think that the items that we discussed at our last meetings, uh, regarding negotiating contract adjustments are meaningful and important, um, for our students and our families. So I feel a little torn. I'm wondering how everyone else feels. As far as a percent increase, I don't think that that's what I would be as upset about if we were to accept, if we were to accept a rollover of one year with 2.5%. I think I could accept that for a year if we needed to. I just, I, I would feel sad and disappointed about not making any changes to the contract in the areas that we saw flaws. I'd be delaying change for one more year.
Yeah, I think it's very important that we add some of the items that we wanted to bring to the table in regards to communication with families.
Yeah. And one more year of status quo doesn't feel great. Um.
No.
Right. Well, we wouldn't have made those recommendations if we didn't feel that they were important. I mean, I, I don't know that they're, unless if, if we're I don't know how it works, but basically like you presented them with what we were asking for. Mit Tony?
Um, through you, Madam Chair. No, I did not.
Okay, because they came to you with this request first.
They have no idea what is on the, um, list of items that the school committee wishes to bring to the table.
Do we, do we want to go through that list of items and prioritize what's an absolute must?
And forgive me, but Beth, I can't recall at what point you joined and whether you're privy to what we're just, what we're talking about.
I joined right after.
Okay. Um, there's kind of just a relatively, I think, kind of short list, but of things that we thought were hot button items just for, um, improvement, mostly centered like people are saying around, around communication, um. And do we have it, Tony, I feel like I have an email I can find it that I could send to, send to Beth.
Yes.
I'm sure you sent it to us, um.
Yes, I did.
I will find it right now.
I am looking.
Try, try, uh, April twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Tony, do you think you sent this to me? You might have sent it to me. I don't. It's all up with, um.
I believe I did.
I know I saw an agreement with Swamp Scott that I remember, um.
Right, just, this was a contract. Let's see, oh boy, I know it's here.
I don't think it's April twenty-ninth.
I think it might be just before that, do you think, uh?
I've got a confidential executive session from May eleventh. Anyway, I'm sorry.
Not at that meeting. I don't know that the contract with the teachers was discussed at that one.
Oh, that was Swamp Scott.
Yeah, this is the M O A. That's the thing that I have.
Oh, here we go. Maybe this is it. Oh, I think I found it. It's from April thirteenth?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for right now.
I'm gonna forward this to all of us right now.
So it was, um. No, no.
No, it's not the most updated one?
No.
Okay, I will stop.
No, that one from the thirteenth is when we, uh, discussed the synchronous learning.
I mean, if you just want to run through them, that's okay with me. I'm also, I mean, I'm happy to abstain too, if you want me to.
No, but it's not something that we voted upon because it was just brought to Tony for negotiation purposes. So it's not anything that, I mean, it's something that we should continue to discuss.
I'm gonna step out for twenty seconds. I'm gonna scan this and send it to you right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know what? This, this does review, this, this does go over the, uh.
The April thirteenth?
Yeah, I have it here. It's all stamped. I'll send what I have here. Okay.
And it says two point five increase to yearly budget. That's
That's, I'll just send what I just found. Hold on one second and we can figure out what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's, uh, the email is referencing the minutes of April thirteenth and it's from April twenty-seventh.
You're sending it to my personal account, right?
I'm gonna make sure I do it right, right now. Um, for her.
Is, Beth, is Chris sending you the, um, information for the school committee meetings to your, okay, great, perfect.
Beth, it's not auto-populating for me. Do you mind telling me your personal email address again?
No problem. It's Beth E. Anderson nineteen sixty-nine at gmail dot com. And just don't get the E in the middle of Beth E. Anderson.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Parentazzi, well, that's being sent over. Um, the only other thing I we didn't discuss at tonight's meeting was the calendar adjustments. Is that something that I should have, um, Chris add to the next meeting?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The regular meeting?
Yeah, that would, that would be a, um, a regular meeting topic, not executive.
I figure this much, but okay.
When you look at the attachment on that email, the first page is just minutes, but then after that, there's first draft. Okay.
I, I just sent it to everybody.
Oh, thank you.
There we go. Okay.
And it's this negotiations between the high school committee and N T A?
Yeah. This is the second draft, which is more recent than the one that I found. Tony, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so the issue is, do we accept this request by the N T A? Do we counter? And Tony, if I interpret what you forward us correctly, which I may not, I'm not a finance person, but when I'm looking at what you sent as far as cost of living adjustments. Are you suggesting that the cost of living increase was less than two point five?
Yeah, only one point three percent.
One point three. And therefore, two point five is quite generous. Not, not necessarily unreasonable, but it's above the cost of living adjustment. Um, and so you're just pointing that out to us in a very fact-based way?
Yeah, that could be one thing I'm suggesting.
And you're
The obvious thing is I wanted you to have the data.
Yeah.
Because the last month, everybody's saying, oh my God, things are so expensive. Look at the price. You know, and when you look back for three years, uh, that's, that's not the reality of the last three years. It's different. And a two and a half, two and a half, two has been, um, a healthy increase. So. I, I guess my, my gut is to suggest that if the school committee would accept their offer, that it go with a statement that we're, the school committee is being extraordinarily generous on this and recognizing that the last the year has been a very difficult time, uh, that it's, it's not a precedent-setting acceptance.
I feel like it's torn, but I feel like an olive branch is nice. I know our, our relationship with the staff has been it, it might be perceived as strained over this past year because we have been as aggressive as we have been about in-person education. So I understand a temptation for a gesture of goodwill, but at the same time, this is they, I, in my opinion, what we did was the only right thing. It wasn't really that extraordinary. It was just the right thing to do. And I know it was hard, but you know why? If we gave everyone in America who had to go to work extra, you know, had to go through extra stress this year, a little bit of an extra raise would be doing that across the board. And I, I, I don't know. I feel like I'm a little bit heartless when I'm saying that, but I think we're all expected to do our job. And was it harder this year? Yep. Um, did it stink? Yep. But, you know, we had to do it. And at the end of the day, I still feel like we deserve to renegotiate a contract and get what we want.
Can I ask you a couple of questions just reading this that you just sent, Lauren? Um, our, our, is our, was our original idea of a counter offer one point five percent increase? Extra thirty minutes, a couple of times a week for extra help and these other items that are under mostly Article ten? Is that what, what you had pre-thought about asking the teachers?
The one point five was supposed to be, um, assuming that we were going to have to negotiate up. So it was, it was going into it with a philosophy that we can't be honest and we were, we wouldn't, we weren't aiming to end at one point five. We were aiming to end higher. Right, guys?
Yep. No. I mean, I think, so these are, these feel like reasonable asks. My own feeling about the raise is this, is that, and I'm gonna, I know that I'm speaking with two MPs on the line. So, um, I think my own feeling is that healthcare has a certain amount of risk. Um, folks in healthcare took that risk and were really heroes of this past year. Like, they were the first sort of front-running heroes, along with many other folks, but especially like grocery workers and other people that had to be on the front lines, mostly healthcare workers. In the hunt, um, we got our, well, we, you got teachers to be also out there, you know, and yes, science would suggest that, that folks working with littles were safer than folks working with, you know, adults or, you know, older, older young adults, et cetera. But I think what I'm worried about is that in terms of what you were saying, Lauren, about goodwill is that teaching is declining. It's harder and harder to find teachers these days, like the, the entire field is actually in a decline. And I wonder, we're really calling on teachers to be the heroes of tomorrow. Like, next year is, and, and I would argue like subsequent years are gonna be recovery years. Now, Tony made a great point earlier in that schools in the hunt have been in school all year, right? So like, we shouldn't suffer massive learning loss. And yet we have had some students, um, in a differentiated way be out, right? Because of the, the pandemic. And we do wanna, you know, utilize these resources to shore up well, most of which is about, um, accelerating learning, recovering, learning, learning loss, reading and writing, I mean, reading and math, et cetera, like you were saying before. And there is a, I, I don't even know if I really personally feel this way, but there is an argument that if we want to invest in goodwill with teachers, knowing that we're gonna expect a lot of them in the future, that this may be the way to do it. I just don't know if it needs a full two point five percent.
What if it were, what if it were at like a two point five percent the first, what if we countered with something, and this is just, I'm brainstorming, but instead of countering with a one-year extension, what if we countered with something more generous for one year and then something scaled back for two more, being like, thank you for your service, one year, and then more moderate for two years and still stick with a three-year contract?
I think that the whole point is that they don't want to negotiate. And so I think that if, and, and it sounds like this is more of a sticking point than anything that, um, I don't know, and correct me when, if I'm wrong, but the whole labor process of negotiation is what they're trying to avoid. And they're trying to get a, a nice raise out of it. But, um, I mean, I just, and I don't know enough about the negotiation process. You know, if we're not gonna do a full contract negotiation, could we counter with? You know, okay. We'll extend it. We'll, you know, see your raise at whatever percentage we decide is appropriate. Um, and it is in some ways negotiating because we're countering, but do we, do we respond by saying we're willing to extend the current contract? And just add, you know, the parent-teacher meetings, just that one simple, like, 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 um, I don't know who said it, like, do we, do we prioritize? Was that, was that, I mean, there are a lot of little things in here that we were gonna talk about, but adding on, you know, a parent-teacher conference and one extra thirty-minute session after school, which, to your point, you know, we're trying to have that makeup, you know, catch-up, um, from COVID year, I think is actually pretty you know, reasonable to ask them to provide, um, and recognize that, you know, they're not the only ones that suffered in this past year. It's the students and, you know, the families. So I mean, I, I'm not saying that two point five is the, is the right number, but could we respond by saying, okay, we'll extend the current contract, we'll give you X amount of a raise for this one year with plans that we're gonna negotiate the contract in one year. The only thing that we'd ask you to add is, blah, I don't know. Is that what you can do without negotiating the contract?
But they'll still have to negotiate, they'll still have to incorporate, they'll still have to go to the M T A, right, Tony? If there's any line change within this contract, is that true?
Uh, on a theoretical basis, yes, but I think if the, if the contract changes were so minimal, that they could probably, uh, agree to it. I, I think, uh, the chair's idea is a really good one. Cause in terms of parents, Article ten items are the ones that you really want. A and, A and D, right? You want, you want more extra help with kids. You want comments in the report cards and you want three parent conferences.
Yeah.
So just two and a half percent in, but this, but these, we, we want these two things. Or three things.
We want Article ten. A and D.
A and D or all of them?
The two thirty-minute
Oh, I see.
sessions per week?
Yeah, that's B. What about B?
Yeah. I mean, I think that in the, in the scheme of things where we are right now and recognizing that students need extra help throughout the next school year. I think B is important.
I do too. I really do.
What are B? Where's B?
B, two thirty-minute extra help sessions.
Lauren, are you looking at the old one?
I'm looking at one Tony sent.
You
Yeah, me too. I don't have.
Oh, I'm looking at Lawrence.
Okay, the one Tony sent says, um, Article ten, A, a minimum of two thirty-minute extra help sessions per week. The next line is, a teacher will add a minimum of one comment on each report card for each subject, um.
One or two comments. Yours is
I think that, I think that the one that, um, Lauren sent is actually updated. It says first draft, April fifteen twenty-one.
That's what I have.
And, and under Article ten, A is, um, hundred and eighty-four days.
Yep.
Three days of A. B is two thirty-minute extra sessions
Yeah.
per week and the comments on the report card. Um, D is the four appropriate evening meetings with two parent conferences.
We wanted three.
Right, we moved it to one per period. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
But I, I also think too that it seems really important for the Labor Management Committee. Um, it seemed though that the way that it's set up now isn't conducive to communication and
Oh, right, I forgot about that, yeah.
I, I personally, I don't think that that's something that should be overlooked for this, especially with next year. You know, you still have students who are remote, who might need catching up and with different, whatever the catching up may look like, that might lead to grievances. And I think that, that you know, this Labor Management Committee is important.
Right, that was talking about the process of grievances and
I, I'm the one that brought up the Labor Management Committee and I'm, I'm really committed to it. But I can tell you that, um, that grievance that really frosted me this year. Um, because they, they just surprised me with it and, um, it's been settled. They backed off. So I, I think I can live without that.
Right, yeah.
For another year. Um, I think it's the right way to go about it. I think even the M T A, uh, uh, suggests, uh, Labor Management Committees. But I think they learned their lesson.
Yeah, I mean
The fact that I made the entire committee meet with me instead of just sending one representative and have to look me in, in the eye when I said, you know, the grievance procedure says you're supposed to do this within ten days of the event and you waited four and a half months. Can you explain that to me? And of course, you know, the silence was palatable. But, uh, I think we can do I think I can live, Kevin and I can run this district fine without that for one more year.
Okay.
But it, but you're right, Michelle, it is important.
Important.
I think the, the, the counter would be two and a half and Article A and, uh, Article ten, A and D.
I think it depends on which, which draft we're looking at.
I know, wait.
Yeah.
So Tony, the one that you're talking about is the one that I was looking for.
It's second, on the first page, it says second draft, four twenty-nine twenty-one.
But that, that is the more recent one. That's the one that Tony sent tonight. Um.
It actually says second draft.
Yeah, it dates it. So it is
Yeah, so. Article ten. A and B.
A and
I don't have a B. I have a
B is a dog.
Oh, D. D.
Beth, do you have that version? I can send it right now.
Just refresh your email.
Okay.
It goes in my junkie mail.
You know what was confusing? So when you, when Lauren sent the email, it shows one from Tony and one from Lauren, but both on the same email. And so I was looking at version from that email. So then once I refreshed my, I got the newer version and now I see, wait.
So the newer version is the one that, um, is the one Tony sent?
Yeah, it's the first page says second draft, April twenty-ninth, two thousand
Got it.
Yeah.
All right, and still Article ten?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's just A and D as in dog and there's no B. It's just A and D as in dog, and there's no B in there, so it's not so confusing.
Okay.
And it's basically the same content.
Now, why did you go from one comment to two? I mean, two, two comments doesn't feel like a lot for a report card, given how much rides on it.
So currently, we get absolutely zero.
I noticed.
Yes, and some teachers do choose to, there might be one or two teachers who choose to comment on their report cards. But when I've talked to Mr. Andrews about it, he's been clear that because it's not in the contract, as many times as he has asked teachers to please write comments in a report card, he cannot make them do so. And so this, this is our first opportunity that I've seen to make it happen. So as far as how many to put in there, um, it's tough. We, we're talking, do we do it per per subject area? Do we do it per, for what? You know, how do we make that?
Right now, it's one per report card on this version.
One per subject, per student, per teacher.
Minimum.
I just, it feels like, because two can give you a sense of both, um, what's in the way in terms of like, learning, and what's in the way in terms of behavior, which feels important for an elementary school age student, right? Like, is your child not doing well in math, going from a negative, like negatively, like? Um, but like, if your child's not doing well in math, is it that they just aren't, um, they just don't have enough background knowledge? They're not, you know, they're not getting something that's clicking? Um, or is it that they aren't paying attention? Or, in case I have a child, they're cartwheeling in class, or something else, right? Like, you know, what, and it, it just feels like with two comments, then you're hitting both sides. But I defer, obviously, I'll defer to Tony, whatever you think.
It also gives us, a teacher an opportunity to give a positive and a negative if they'd like to. I think the teachers would, would have the, um, they are always encouraged, I believe, from where I heard from Kevin, to write more and more and more on report cards. It's just wrote as the bare minimum. And, um, and I think, I don't know. The other thing is that for a lot of schools, you have a different teacher for every subject area. And for ours, right up until fifth and sixth grade, it's one teacher for all subject areas. So you could kind of reference, I'm just playing devil's advocate. You could kind of reference behavior somewhere else, maybe, or some other aspect of learning, and this is just brainstorming, but, um, and then, of course, in fifth and sixth, they do go back and forth between two teachers, but still they share multiple subjects. But, um, I think it was just a question of what would be, you might, you might be right, maybe two is better, I don't know. But I feel like they're going from a place of resistance to being required to write anything, and feeling like this must be a burden, otherwise they'd be doing it already, I would imagine. Why, why aren't they?
I just wanna, um, I just, I pulled out one of my kid's report cards, and the first area is interpersonal skills and work habits. And so is that included as a subject? Like, should we be clear? Because I think that, you know, to your point, that, that is an area where if it's, you know, mostly behavioral, that could be addressed. Interpersonal skills and work habits, and then science, social studies, ELA and math. And then the specials are on the back.
I just, if it's one comment, I would hate to see it wasted on, like, so-and-so is such a joy to having class. That's a uniform teacher comment, right, that everybody makes? And I, you know, I think you wanna be able to, teachers should give substantive information, right, in comments, I think, to parents, particularly if something is, um, not matching up for them, right? And, um, and, um, yeah, I think.
What if it said substantive, um, comment? And then that gives Kevin the authority and the teachers review to say, hey, this isn't substantive, look at what you're doing on the report card. Does that make sense?
It does to me, but I don't know how far off the, are, are we, like, in the realm of possible or not possible, Tony? Where you're sitting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, first of all, our class size is small. Uh, it, it is a lot in terms of uh, change. I'm wondering if the word comments a problem. Maybe it should be commentary.
I like that.
So we're not saying, say one thing, we're saying, tell us.
Explain.
A commentary substantive, substantive information that gives a parent a sense of where the student needs, um, to improve. If that's necessary. And if not, then you can say.
Or what's going well, yeah.
It's a joy to have Tony in class. Right?
And it is, but that's.
It really is.
They could even be saying something like, you know, excels at multiplication, you know.
Right.
Substantive, it can be, I can give a plug if there's a plug, but, you know, what's going on?
Because then you know what's getting in the way. So if your math grade is bad, but everything else is good, you're like, so-and-so is a joy to have in class, appreciate their comments, wish they'd cartwheel less in math.
How about that, how about this? A teacher will add a minimum of, no, let's take it, take out minimal. A teacher will add a commentary of substantive information regarding each subject on each report card.
Perfect. Now, it's not one sentence or two sentences, it's just, what is a commentary, and it has to be sufficient. That's good. So do you think if we ask for that, and if we've asked for the meetings and the parent-teacher conferences and?
I think we need, I, I would think that we need to make it a choice between the thirty-minute extra help, which I think may be more important, particularly in a, in an academic acceleration year, and the three, the three conferences. I think, you, you know, we're getting to the point now, we're negotiating, it's not a rollover. I think if I, if we got A, then I think I could still justify it as a rollover. You know, it's a rollover, two and a half percent, all we want is this.
I think that's fair, as long as it's a one-year rollover, and then next year, this is a priority for us too, is having the three conferences instead of one. In my opinion.
Yeah, and we can hold on to it for next year. Tony, how about all of the rest of the items in Article five? Is there anything?
No, that's, that's all tech, that's.
Okay, okay.
Stuff that could wait.
Yeah, that's not adjective, that's just cleaning up craziness.
It's good for us to have already done, though, Tony, that you already have all that prep.
Like, the contract says that we have to pay people in a way that we don't pay them. Because if you remember, Lauren, I killed that twenty-six paycheck thing two years ago.
Yeah, right.
I just explained to them how it was not in their own best interest to have the town hold money.
Yeah. I mean, all that is great work.
Addy, you would have loved that conversation. If you get the money and it goes to your checking account, you can tell your bank to transfer it to your savings account, and you can get the interest instead of the town in the hunt. Oh, no, we don't wanna do that. I said, what?
No interest, in, interest-free loans for, uh, for the hunt.
Um, just the other thing about the two faculty meetings, I just wanna make sure that you guys, uh, Tony and, and Kevin are covering yourselves for the things that you feel are required of your staff to be successful in the school. So for Kay, you have two faculty meetings per month, or one meeting per month of two hours.
Yeah, I think we're okay. You know, I'm, you know, I think the hundred and eighty-four days and hundred, instead of a hundred and eighty-three, um, you know, you already have this, the, uh, calendar. That's gonna be aggravating to parents. Let's drop that, and we'll put it back in. Uh, in the fall, it'll be on the table when we negotiate, so that we have time to actually set a calendar that is a hundred and eighty-four days.
That's a, that's another point, though. Should we set a deadline for negotiations for next year?
I would say that, y- yes, that the school committee is adamant that negotiations begin by September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, that's great.
Absolutely.
Any of the negotiations would be implemented in the fall of twenty twenty-two, but we're not finding ourselves in a position of next spring, trying to.
That's right. We want negotiations for the, the, um, fall of twenty-two to begin September fifteenth of twenty-one.
That's great. People have a summer to regroup.
Yeah.
Not unlike we do with Swamp Scott. We don't wait till the end of the contract before we start talking about it.
Well, that's our effort, and that's what we try, yeah.
Although we could have, because Regina had magic.
He's just saying, they showed up and.
She walks in the room.
That's like pulling teeth.
Okay, so, so let me recap. I am gonna go back to them and say that the school committee will agree to a two and a half percent, one-year rollover if Article ten is changed to include a minimum of two thirty-minute extra help sessions per week. And the, and a teacher will add a commentary of substantive information regarding each subject on each report card. And then I'll leave the regular communication with parents and guardians expected to be done, because that's not, that's conceptual, not definitive.
That's fine.
And it's the position of the school committee that, you know, you're supposed to, you're a professional, you're supposed to be communicating with parents and guardians. Particularly those of you with thirteen kids in the class. And, and in, and we agreed to the two point five percent. Am I, do I have it right?
I'm fine with the two point five percent.
What I'll do is I'll write this up. By the way, I sent the negotiating team the same graph I sent you today.
We think it's important, like you suggested, Tony, though, that you point out that this is a precedent, that we're not gonna be settling on two point five every year going forward. That would be very generous.
Is this something that we should vote upon, or because it's still being negotiated, and we don't vote upon? It's my perception.
Um, Madam Chair, you could vote a motion that, um, I'll repeat it for Michelle slower.
Thank you.
That, um, the school committee agrees to a one-year rollover. If the NTA agrees to the following provisions. One, um, Article ten, A, a minimum of two thirty-minute extra help sessions per week.
A minute, I'm sorry, can you say that again, a minimum?
A minimum of two thirty-minute extra help sessions per week.
Okay.
And also, A, a teacher will add a commentary of substantive information regarding each subject on each report card period, regular communication with PG, parents and guardians, is expected to be done.
Did we take out the last sentence? Does it make it sound like we think they're not doing their job? Are we being kinda?
But, well, in fairness, I think that some do it and some don't.
But we're not defining what regular communication is.
Or do we wanna reword that? You know, uh, my concern is that, okay, you get the report card, and there's a commentary. And then as a parent, you're like, oh, gosh, I have some questions. And will that teacher be available to discuss the report card and the commentary?
So the expectation thus far, wouldn't it, isn't it, isn't current state that that teacher should be available to any parent who reaches out?
I think, I think regular communication with parents is expected to be done, is already in the contract.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking, if that isn't adding, if it's not adding to what we currently have, then is it just gonna be perceived as, as a, um, demeaning comment? Not that I, we don't intend it that way, but would it be?
That's a good point, Lauren.
Yeah, I agree with you, Lauren. I think we can take that out.
I don't wanna go, if we have some ill will at all, I don't wanna add to it. I don't know.
We don't need to fuel that fire.
I'm almost positive, we put, I tried to get more concrete last negotiations, and that's the only thing they, they gave.
I think it'd be okay to, I'm with that sentiment, in my personal opinion, but.
I mean, could we add something to the last line, you know, and, and we'll be available to discuss, you know, seven?
Per request? Sounds good. That way it doesn't sound like we're saying you don't communicate, we're just saying, also follow up.
Okay, so a minimum of two thirty-minute extra help sessions per week, and a teacher will add commentary of substantive information regarding each subject on each report card, and will be available to discuss, to discuss, uh, said report card.
Yeah, as needed, or as requested?
As requested.
By, do you want me to just say period or by PG? I think as requested is fine, right? Cause that would just cover everybody.
Yeah.
Tony, do you think if this is, in your personal opinion, do you think that there's some hope that this would carry?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I'm gonna need help with that last, uh, cause I was trying to find. Yeah, the sentence in the contract right now is teacher communication with parents and guardians is in the best interest of students and families, and therefore is encouraged and expected.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
So, wh- why don't we just take that out?
Yeah.
And do you wanna add, um, an available to discuss each report card?
Michelle touched that in.
The button, yeah.
But I, 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 I think that that's just reiterating what's already in the contract. I don't know that it's needed.
Let's take it out then, because if we already have that, and we don't wanna be, we don't wanna be petty, why would we keep this petty? It's a little bit more vague.
Yeah, let's, let's end it with, a teacher will subject to each report card, and then it's already in the contract. Teacher communication with parents and guardians is in the best interest of students and families, and therefore is encouraged and expected.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, what, um, was that what we were doing, just A and, and D? Uh, or we're not doing D?
We're not doing D.
Okay, and then, um, and also to start nego- negotiations in September?
September fifteenth, by September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Negotiations.
The NTA will be available to, to start negotiations on or before September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Actually, to make, to make it correct, available to begin negotiations for the six.